Thank you for being with us tonight. This meeting has been brought to you in part by...
Let Grand Forks International Airport help you start your next vacation off on the right foot. Grand Forks International Airport offers flights to the sunny destinations of Orlando, Las Vegas, and Phoenix on Allegiant, and connections anywhere in the world through Minneapolis-St. Paul on Delta. Forget the hassle of long drives, parking nightmares, and stressful check-ins. The convenience of flying locally means less headaches and more time for you. Grand Forks International Airport, your airport, simply grand.
Know what's in this box? Well, in case your crystal ball is broken, here's a hint. Safe, reliable energy, for starters, but there's also a commitment to this community. See, at Excel Energy, this is our hometown. So we're not just about making a living here, we're about living here. Aw, I wish I had wings.
In our community, we're always delivering. Excel Energy, responsible by nature.
Brantley Gilbert returns to Grand Forks. Fired Up Tour 2020 with special guests Chase Rice and Brandon Lay. Alara Center, Saturday, May 2nd. Get tickets now at Ticketmaster.com. The brand-new album Fire and Brimstone drops everywhere October 4th. Brantley Gilbert, live in concert. Check more at BrantleyGilbert.com.
Good evening and welcome to the Grand Forks Growth Fund Job Development Authority Meeting for Monday, December 16th, 2019. Roll call.
Weigel.
Here.
Dockler.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Thank you. Mock.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Sandy.
Here.
Bean.
Here.
Mayor Brown.
Here.
We have a form.
Okay, move on to item 2.1.
Grand Forks Herald Building Review Project Overview and Construction Manager at Risk. See more consideration.
Okay, first, this is a public hearing. We'll open the public hearing. Anybody who'd like to come forward and present on the public hearing? Seeing nobody step forward, we will close the public hearing. This is an item that's been to the Growth Fund and it's been to the Committee of the Whole. So as a council, we've had quite a bit of discussion on that, on this. So unless we want to have some comment from staff, I just ask for a motion to approve. Motion by Sandy, second by the mayor. Any further discussion on this motion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 2.2.
The Cyrus Bremer Loan Payoffs.
Okay, any questions before I open the public hearing? If not, we'll open the public hearing. Anybody coming forward? We'll close the public hearing. Ms. Richards?
As your staff report shows, this, we received a payoff of approximately $800,000 from Cyrus of outstanding loans. This was ahead of schedule. And so while we don't need any action to receive that money, the recommendation is that for the unrestricted balances that were repaid, we would use those funds to pay up debt that the JDA took out from Bremer Bank to fund the expansion at Cyrus from 2006. So the request before you is to authorize us to make those repayments, which would save about $20,000 in interest.
Okay, any questions on this? Move or approval? You have a motion, Sandy, second?
Second.
Mayor Brown? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign? Motion carries. Item 3, adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn? The second, Marshall seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign? We're adjourned. The City of Grand Forks is proud of the University of North Dakota City Council Meeting, Monday, December 16th, 2019. It's hereby called to order. Welcome and roll call.
Weigel.
Here.
Dockler.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Mock.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Sandy.
Here.
Bean. All present, we have a form.
Thank you. So under 1.2 Mayor's announcements, we mourn the loss of Kent Anderson, who recently lost his battle with cancer. Kent was a member of the Board of Adjustments for over 35 years, and we thank him for his many years of service and dedication to the community of Grand Forks, and our thoughts are with his family. I also had the honor and privilege to lead a delegation of BRIC members to meet with the Air Force Air Combat Command leaders, including General Holmes. Recently, we once again championed the people and mission of our base and provided opportunity for ongoing dialogue about how to continue to be firm supporters of our base and its airmen. Congratulations to local Judge Dunn Good, John Jensen, who recently was elected by his peers to become the next North Dakota Supreme Court Chief Justice. We're proud of Judge Jensen and proud to note his more than two decades of service in private practice as a district judge in the community, and he's a graduate of the University of North Dakota Law School. Also, I want to thank 8th grade teacher Brent Durand from Schrader Middle School and his class who warmly welcomed me to talk about local government last week. We have superb teachers and inspiring students all around town. I always look forward to talking with them. Also, some other announcements, there'll be no COW on the 23rd of December, so we'll have a COW City Chamber meeting, or City Council meeting on January 6th. City Hall is closed December 25th for Christmas and January 1st for New Year's Day. And we wish you Merry Christmas, everyone, and a happy holiday and a safe holiday ahead of next week. So with that, then we go to item 2, Awards Presentations Appointments and Proclamations, 2.1.
Riverside Pool Year-End Report.
Welcome, Melanie.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. Tonight I have with me Bill Pomassino, the Director of the Park District. And each year, after we had the agreement with the Park District to manage Riverside Pool, we've brought together a report to share with you. This year, the city's cost was about $19,000 with an additional $14,000 for flood cleanup. The numbers were a little bit lower for attendance this year, but I think everything's working well and, kind of like we shared years before, the expenses that we had initially anticipated for the pool haven't, we haven't really needed to expend the money that we've had to in the past, so the pool's been operating well within our budget. Would you like to add anything?
Welcome.
I think the numbers were down. We had an interesting summer. I think the classic, looking at the summer on, at Elk's Pool, June 7th, we had 834 swimmers at Elk's Pool. The next day, we were closed. That's how the summer went the whole way, because of temperature. So, but Riverside was closed six additional days this year because of flood. And we have also this fall prep the pool for a spring flood that is maybe coming, or is coming, you know, on that. But I also think one of the issues we dealt with, again, is East Grand Forks Pool was open this summer for a full season. So it was a very average year for us, and weather was down a little bit, but I think things are working very well down there.
Thank you very much. Any questions, sir, Mr. Pomassino? Thank you, sir. Or motion to receive and file? Mr. Sandy motions, Ms. Marshall seconds. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion is received and filed. Thank you, 2.2.
Presentation on the Longest Table.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. My name's Catherine Kestner. I'm the Director of the Greater Grand Forks Young Professionals. And presenting alongside me today will be Becca Bomback, our co-organizing organization, Director of Community Foundation, Becca Kruger with Grand Forks Region EDC. Becca, Brandon Bomback, there's a lot of Bombacks here, sorry about that. Brandon Bomback with Grand Forks Region EDC. We are really excited to tell you a little bit about the success of Longest Table this year, and the city was a really strong partner on that. So I'd also like to take this opportunity to thank you all for your initiatives and investment into this really great community event. So Longest Table started last year, in our first year in 2018, and we had 717 guests come to the table. That was held on Third Street in downtown Grand Forks. This year, we are very excited to announce that we beat that record by inviting and successfully hosting 868 guests at that table on September 4th. And we expanded the table a lot this year, so the table was 1,250 feet long and had room for 1,000 people at that table, but we were really excited to beat our record from last year and even just our second year. Our co-organizing team are members that I just mentioned to you, as well as Greta Slavsky with the city, Luke Deekman and Mike McLean with JLG, and then Camden Larson representing Red River High School. This event was very different from last year, but also very similar. Last year, it was completely funded by grant support and then co-partnered with the city on the micro-funding for the grants. And then this year, it was very heavily supported by the business community and many investments made into that to allow us to do another successful year of Longest Table. We were also recognized at the North Dakota Main Street Summit for one of Governor Burgum's awards. Grand Forks was recognized for the Longest Table for Livability for All Ages. And our co-organizing team was really excited about this achievement and recognition of this, of this project and this program that we've hosted for two years.
Again, thank you so much for your support. One of the best parts of the Longest Table is that we were able to capture quite a bit of data. We started this last year, and then we took it to University Avenue and, again, implemented the data piece of the Longest Table to capture survey results. Last year, really focused on more of a broad spectrum of what do you think about your community, what are the priorities that we should hit? This year, we focused a little bit more on the University Avenue corridor, as we were, the Community Foundation and Knight Foundation, as you know, are working on the University Avenue corridor study with JLG Architects. So the main areas that we gathered data, just like last year, demographics, but then we also added in programming priorities and redevelopment priorities for the University Avenue corridor. And those community priorities were very similar. I'm just going to click this and I'll, if you go to LongestTableGF.com, you will have a link to view the results. These are the same, this is the same way that we had our results presented from last year. So it's going to look very similar for those that have used it before, but it is interactive. So I'm on the first of four slides here, and you can see that this is our demographic information. And just to briefly go over how it works, if you are interested in what the female population that was at the table thought, you could click that, and it will change the information on that slide. So you can see specifically, perhaps it's the 9% that weren't born in the United States, what if they, any of them were UND faculty, your staff, et cetera. So it's very interactive, and as we go forward into some other, of these other categories, you'll see how useful it really is.
Good evening, members of council. I'm Becca Kruger with the Grand Forks Region EDC, and I also serve on the Board of Young Professionals. One of the things that we wanted to do with this data was to measure some of those priorities in the community. And in both year one and year two, we tracked along the same questions. One of the things that we asked was what are the most important things to work on to improve the future of Grand Forks? Again, gauging what people in this community find important. The top three things were increasing availability and affordability of housing. That measured 32% of respondents chose that as one of their top three things. 30% said adding more recreational opportunities, and this was actually the greatest priority among those who were new to community, the community. 39% of the respondents said were one to four-year residents. Then we had a tie, growing the economy with more good jobs and improving downtown walkability and bikeability. Becca already showed you the interactive data sets that are available publicly to anybody in Grand Forks who's, who are working on projects, or to city department heads, and to the city council and county commission. One of that, those things is that we can parse that information by select categories, and I just wanted to show you some of those ways that we have done that. We wanted to gauge what those 18 and under are also thinking about their community. As you know, workforce is something that can be a challenge, and we're always looking at how do we retain our youth here in Grand Forks? So for those 18 and under, you can see that there were a different set of priorities. 46% said improving downtown walkability and bikeability. Building a local arts and culture scene was also important, and improving diversity and inclusion. Additionally, we measured the perceptions of those who aren't born in the US but have come here to reside as either permanent residents or refugees. Recreational opportunities measured ranked high, and then also improving diversity and inclusion and becoming accepting to newcomers. So you can see how, when you look at different populations, things that might be important to one set of people aren't necessarily important or rank lower. So when you're looking at different priorities within the community, looking at the whole picture and being able to measure perceptions across the board and having that interactive tool can be very useful. Also, those who moved to Grand Forks for jobs, again, talking about that retention piece, the priorities ranked a little bit differently. So the local arts and culture scene, growing the economy, and again, improving the downtown walkability and bikeability measured high. We also can see that there is a little bit of a juxtaposition. Obviously, those within our, those people within our community who have different life experiences might think differently. So for example, those who had kids at home, increasing affordability and availability of childcare was in the top five priorities, but those who did not have kids at home, it was in the bottom two priorities. So as you're going through the data, just acknowledge that you can search by different backgrounds and get a perception or gauge of, of what folks from different backgrounds are thinking. But holistically, we also have that, where you can see a measurement across the board. This was perhaps the funniest, and maybe not the most surprising, but lowering taxes was a low priority across the board. It was actually one of the bottom three priorities overall across all respondents. But you can see the disparity in those 19 to 34, they, they really didn't care about taxes that much. Only 4.5% of them chose it as one of their top three priorities, while those 55 to 90 year olds, it measured much higher, 24.5%. We also asked about favorite spaces and amenities in Grand Forks, because we want to know what we are doing well. University Park, The Greenway, Choice Fitness, Downtown, Town Square, the library, the mall, UND, and REA all served quite high. But you can see there's many, many things that people felt Grand Forks was doing positively. We do have access to all of this raw data, should you like to see it. It's not housed publicly right now at the moment, just because it's in long text form, but if you, as counselors, would like access to that, or anybody else, they can request them. And then we also asked what public spaces or amenities would be awesome to have that we currently do not have. Across the board, you can see that more came into one of the highest words, but also indoor winter space and indoor youth spaces was something that was measured over and over again, as well as more art, parks, and then also a lot of talk about dog parks that didn't With that, you can see that last year, we asked the same set of questions. This year, we did add availability and affordability of childcare as an option, so you can see there's nothing to measure against that. But you can see over here how perceptions in the community might have shifted, and we plan to continue tracking these same things. With that, I'll turn it over to my colleague, Brandon, who'll talk about programming.
Thank you, and members of the council, I appreciate the opportunity. It was a really fun event. The main takeaway was getting all these people together, but the data has been a lot of fun, and I think it's been said a few times, but the website, I really encourage you to click through it. We're pulling out a few of these narratives and stories, but it's a lot of fun to dig in for yourselves. Some of the top programming priorities were pretty universal across all of the respondents of the survey, and there was a lot of agreement. Loved the park events, specialty shops, and street events. And so it shows us a little bit we're on the right path, but as you saw in the last word cloud, we could use more of them in most people's opinions. Now, we got into redevelopment priorities, because this Longest Table event took place on University Corridor, and there's an adjacent study taking place right now, too. And so we want to look at, in particular, we asked about these four areas listed there and mapped right here. So that's Greek Row Parking Lot, that's specifically asking about the area across from the fraternity houses in the open parking lot in University, just east of Columbia. University-Washington Intersection, the Warehouse District as you get downtown, and then the last leg, which is YMCA to Third Street. So you can see the four locations circled there. One important thing to note, and I'm going to show it to you by clicking back into the data real quick, is that overall, there was strong support, or at least optimism, for redevelopment of all four. And to draw your attention to that on our fourth screen, again, you can click through all of this, we're just going to pull out a couple of narratives. So in the top of the page, you see the light blue bars. If one indicates no potential, five indicates strong potential, and three being neutral, you can see that the majority of our respondents are going to fall into the four or fives more than the one or twos across all of those locations. So that tells us there's a narrative here, that there's a general optimism, or at least a priority set for development all across the corridor. So it's, it's a, it's a strong narrative right away, but when we start to break down each of these locations, we find that there's, I guess, those who are really in favor and those who are really against, and this is the fun part of this tool. So if we click into those who thought that the Greek Row Parking Lot had strong development, of those who voted for that, five, strong potential, you also see an over-representation of strong potential within Warehouse, University-Washington Intersection, and YMCA to Third. So what we can conclude there is that if you think there's strong potential in the first location, you're going to generally think there's strong potential across all of them. Very similar, if you get close to center, you're not really sure if your mind's made up on it, you're going to see over-representation across all those locations in the center. And then lastly, as our narrative continues, you're going to be falling into the camp of ones as well. The point here that we want to point out to you is that there may be a component of education required. That'd be the big takeaway we would take, regardless of your development project. People get excited when they start to see renderings such as this. That's when they're really going to weigh in. But overall, there's going to need to be an educational component. So that's one of our takeaways. As we run through those lists of four locations, we'll just give you the aggregate data. Of all the people who indicated that the Greek Row is a priority, as in four or five, some sort of priority, not on the negative side, that's 35% of our respondents said there's a priority for development. The next intersection or location is University Avenue and Washington Intersection, where 46 indicated a priority. This increases as we get closer to downtown, with the Warehouse District of 50% of our respondents indicating there's some kind of redevelopment potential, and then 53% with that last leg, YMCA to the Third Street Corridor. So the story here is the closer we get to downtown, at least the perception of our respondents are that there's more potential for redevelopment. There's a lot of ways you could dissect those data, but it's just really interesting. We show you the power of the data, we show you the importance of our residents' perceptions, and how by playing with these data, you can tease out a lot of really interesting narratives and learn from them.
So one of the other really exciting pieces about Longest Table is what happens throughout the next year. So a lot happens. We have the data piece, of course, and that data is utilized in many different ways. We also, over this last year, from 2019, 2018 to 2019, have seen other organizations or smaller communities do Longest Table. So Red River hosted a version of the smallest table, Red River hosted a version of the Longest Table, and then the Alara Center, when they had their SpectraBombs conference here, hosted a version of it as well. So people have latched onto that concept and have really created their own table and invited people to it as well. I think one of the most exciting pieces is the partnership that we have with the City of Grand Forks and what that allows us, enables us to do. So we had 19 micro-grant applications. People could apply for a grant up to $3,000 in micro seed funding, and we have awarded nine of those to receive funding. So here's the full list of them that will be receiving funding for 2019. Just to call out a few, Bathroom Murals in, in Grand Forks High Schools and middle schools and elementary schools. Tyler Larson is, is working on the Penny House, a house, a location for junior high kids and high school kids to come and gather in a safe environment, provide programming. And he actually is opening a location in Columbia Mall, so he's moving forward with that. And then one that's, just was very unique compared to all the other ones, was some neighborhood community buildings. So there, in the near north side neighborhood, there will be some crockpot meal classes and just some community building there. So we're really excited about what will come from this Longest Table and how these micro grants will really help people get the ideas off the table and into the community and really help create some change and positive effects in the Greater Grand Forks community. We are willing to take some questions if you guys have them, but thank you for your time, and we really appreciate being here.
Well, thank you. I'm very impressed. It was a wonderful project, wonderful experience, and now we have wonderful information to make our community better. So I can't wait till next year, because it's really fun to see this project grow. Any comments or questions from council? Just thank you. I mean, this is incredible. It's going to take us a while to digest it and make use of it. Maybe you said, but do you have a date for next, the next one?
We do not have a date set. We are working with two partners who have already come forward that they're interested, so no official details yet, but probably around that same September, as we've done the first week of September both years, and it's been very successful.
I think we have to thank you guys for making that many meals available.
Absolutely, yes. A warm meal for every, a hot meal for every attendee was very appreciated.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Sandy?
Just a quick question. Any idea where you're thinking of? Are you going to go downtown again, or university, or is there any reason why we wouldn't do a neighborhood, north end or south end?
So one of the things that we like about the table is the fact that it's mobile, and so we want to attach the table to community conversations each year. There is some talk about looking at some neighborhood building and specifically a corridor that two private businesses are interested in enhancing next year. So we don't officially have the location set, so we don't want to announce it, but it, it's looking like it won't be in the downtown area next year.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Friendly recommendation, suggestion, maybe we should talk with the school district and see what they have going on, and maybe a partnership for going in some neighborhood where they have issues going on would be helpful as well.
Yeah, that's a good recommendation. We do have high schoolers who serve on our core organizing committee, so I think that would be a great suggestion.
Thank you very much. And next, we go to item 2.3.
Recognition from IMLA Local Government Fellows Program for our very own Howard Swanson.
Well, surprise, surprise, here it comes. I want to say congratulations to City Attorney Howard D. Swanson for reaching the 20-year milestone as a local government fellow from the International Municipal Lawyers Association. The Local Government Fellows Program recognizes attorneys demonstrating outstanding proficiency and competency in the practice of local government law. We appreciate the guidance you have provided us during your time as City Attorney Howard, and congratulations for this achievement. He said thank you. Next, item 2.2. Next, item 2.4.
Employee recognition.
For November 2019, Sue Rory Subey, Rory Subey, 10 years with the Police Department. And then December 2019, Erin Ray, 20 years with the Police Department, Debbie Holverson, 20 years with PSAP, Chris Carlson, 15 years with FIRE, Lisa Botman, five years with Wastewater Lab, and Nicholas Rankie, five years with engineer, as an engineering electrician. Let's give them a hand and say thank you. So item three, public hearings and second reading of ordinances, 3.1.
Public hearing and second reading of ordinance amending city code relating to gravel allowances in heavy industrial areas.
Opening the public hearing on 3.1. We're closed the public hearing on 3.1. Council action on 3.1. Mr. Sandy motions. Mr. Weigle, most seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post carries, thank you. Item four, action item. Who would like action items pulled for discussion? I will pull 4.0, 4.1, 4.7, and 413. Mr. Vian.
4.5.
4.5, Mr. Vian. Any other items to be pulled for discussion? If not, that leaves, what, 42, 43, 44, 46, 48, 49, 410, 411, 412, 413, 414, 415. And I'm pulling 13. So that leaves those for, motion and second, Mr. Sandy motions, Mr. Vian seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post carries, thank you. 4.0.
Dr. Sheridan, UND Mays Research Farm, Lisa Denham.
She have a motion to approve by Mr. Sandy second. Ms. Marshall, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post carries, thank you. 4.1.
Discussion and cancellation of the December 23 Committee of the Whole Meeting.
So the discussion is we're going to cancel the Cal meeting on the 23rd and move that item to January 6th, so it's discussed. Good motion. Mr. Sandy motions, Mr. Vian seconds. All in favor, say aye.
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 Post carries, thank you. 4.5.
Cofshure Amendment Number Two of Agreement for the Grand Forks Water Treatment Plant.
Mr. Vian.
Yeah, I won't take too terribly long here, but I just, I just wanted to say, we did have an op ed in the paper this weekend that Mayor Brown, President Sandy, myself, Senator Holmberg, and Representative Sanford kind of recognized the joint, how jointly we all worked together to make this project happen. This, this item here is for the last $9.875 million, bringing the total that the city will have received from the state to just nearly $75 million, which is, of course, a significant dollar amount, but a significant impact, which would have had to be covered by water rates or some other mechanism. So it's been a very advantageous project for us, and it took nearly four bienniums to get the project through, and it was a lot of work in each one of them, but I do want to make sure we acknowledge the leadership from our local legislators, including and maybe specifically Senator Holmberg, who was Chair of Senate Appropriations, and Representative Sanford was a part of the House Appropriations process, who I think helped us through every one of those bienniums. And then thank the Governor and Lieutenant Governor and the Water Commission for their help on this one here. So I just wanted to make sure we acknowledge that, and with that, I'd make a motion to approve.
Motion second, Mr. Sandy. All in favor, say aye. Yes, Mr. Sandy.
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Sandy?
I'm sorry, just one quick comment. There are several of us on this council that have been here for several years working on this project. Mr. Vian, of course, is the first one that comes to mind as somebody that was doing a lot of heavy lifting for the City of Grand Forks in Bismarck, and he deserves a significant amount of credit for what happened and for the funding that we received, so he deserves a personal thank you, and I do personally really appreciate everything you've done for our community. I'd also like to recognize Mr. Weber, who's spent considerable time working on this as well, but there's someone that's no longer on this council that was a bulldog on this issue, and that's Mr. Terry Girkie, and he spent a lot of time reminding everyone how important this was for the funding for the City of Grand Forks, and so I'd like to send out a thank you for our past council member as well.
Mr. Vian?
Yeah, and I forgot, I look at Todd, I mean, the city staff was phenomenal on this thing here. I think why we overlook it, it's just the political aspect, but, but the work Melanie and Todd and, and all those did year after year was, was exceptional, so thanks for that.
Well, thank you. And now we have a motion and second before us. All in favor, say aye.
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 Post carries, thank you. Then we have 4.7.
2020 CDBG Program and Proposed Community Services Grant Program.
Good evening. When this was at the Cal last week, there was some discussion about the use of sales tax proceeds for this purpose, and so we'd kind of like to add just under the findings of and analysis section of your staff report, some verbiage that is kind of supportive of that. And Maureen and I kind of crafted this on the fly a little bit late this afternoon, so it didn't make it into your actual staff report, but the intention would be that we would add, whoops, my, there we go. Uses of the 1% sales tax include the creation of new jobs, enhance the economic climate, save existing jobs, create new wealth, enhance the local property tax base, encourage capital investment, improve the quality of life, enhance tourism and local events, promote public-private or public-private enterprises or partnership, and diversify the local economy. The proposed Community Services Grant Program would support these, and we have concluded that they, that it is necessary, necessary, especially in regard to enhancing quality of life and to help address workforce issues. So if you have any questions, the purpose of this was just to, again, clarify that this is an eligible use of those funds.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Ms. Marshall?
Thank you for all your good work on this. Really, really appreciate it. I think it'll be very good for our community, so I move for approval.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion, second. Ms. Doppler, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post carries, thank you, Meredith. And then we have 413.
Ordinance amending Grand Forks City Code Sections 15-0404 and 0406 related to building sewers and connections and restrictions on use of public sewers, some pumps discharge to sanitary sewer policy and program implementation action plan.
Melanie?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. I did pass out just two sheets for you tonight. Because we've got this revised, revised code in front of you, we'd actually like to take the opportunity to adjust our limit on cadmium. We had recognized through an audit with the State Environmental Quality Department that we actually had the wrong limit in there, and so it's an adjustment. If we can incorporate that, it'd go from .29 milligrams per liter to .0, or .11 milligrams per liter for cadmium in that.
Okay. Thank you. So any further discussion from council? Mr. Weigle motions, Ms. Doppler seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post carries, thank you. Mr. Sandy? 413, I believe.
It's actually part of the some pump ordinance, but because the code that's being brought before you tonight includes local, local limits, it, it's just an opportunity to bring it before you tonight instead of doing it at another time.
To correct that. So we needed an introduction to ordinance on 412, 413, 414. Who would like to sponsor that? Mr. Vian, thank you. Item five, official items, 5.1.
The 2020 Salary Plan.
5.2.
Statement of Cash Balance as of October 31st.
5.3.
And the visit management summary as of November 30th.
Citizen Request, item six. I don't see any ballots in the box, so item seven, approved amendment bill, 7.1.
The vendor list and engineer's estimate as presented.
Need of Mr. Weigle motions, Ms. Doppler seconds. All in favor, say aye.
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 Post, bills are paid, 7.2.
And the minutes from September 3rd and September 16th.
Ms. Marshall motions, second. Ms. Doppler, all in favor, say aye.
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 Post carries, thank you. 7.3.
For the Water Department, expenses over $10,000.
Any action for that? Mr. Weigle motions, and Mr. Sandy seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post carries, thank you. Item eight, City Administrator Comments. Mr. Phelan, welcome.
Just a thanks. It's the end of the year. I think we've had a good year, and, and much of it is due to your leadership, Mayor Brown and city council members, so we're thankful. I think we've had an extraordinarily good year, and we're looking forward to 2020 and beyond because we have a lot of good things that we're moving forward with. So at the end of the year, thank you very much for all that you do.
Well, thank you. Item nine, Mayor and Councilmember comments. Councilman Weigle.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. Just real quick, Christmas Eve, what time is city hall open till?
Till. Mr. Phelan.
Christmas Eve is not an official holiday for the City of Grand Forks, so generally we're, we're open business hours, 8 to 5, like a normal day. Obviously, we have 24-hour services, that's you, water plant, police, fire, but generally we are open 8 to 5.
Perfect. I would just, I don't know if I need to make a motion or ask if we could close at noon that day, so people could spend more time with their family.
Mr. Swanson, what do you say? It's up to the council. It's a council motion, council vote. Do you make any motion?
Yep.
Ms. Doppler, seconds, that we close at noon on December 24th. Any further discussion from council? Mr. Sandy?
Are we not approving four hours of flex time for the city staff for that exact reason?
Mayor Brown and Council President saying yes. You, you have allowed four hours, which has, you know, was, was part of that, so we traditionally have not done that, but of course, everyone would appreciate it, so.
Mr. Phelan?
Yes.
Does any work get done Christmas Eve?
Of course it does.
Of course it does.
Of course it does.
Yeah. Strangely enough, sometimes a lot of work gets done because it's quieter, right? So it, it, we do have much reduced staff on, on, on those kinds of days like Christmas Eve.
Sounds good.
We're going to have less if this passes.
We're not against the motion.
Okay, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Thank you, Mr. Weigle. Ms. Doppler, comments?
No, just congratulations to all the December graduates from UND.
All right. And then Mr. Weber, you on the phone?
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Is Ms. Mock?
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. Ms. Marshall?
And a Happy New Year.
Mr. Vian? Council President Sandy?
There was, I've had an email exchange over the last few days with someone from the Park District, someone from the School District, Mr. Phelan, Terry Brenner. There was some discussion at the most recent school board meeting that some of the school board members think that it would be good if we had another city-school district meeting to discuss zoning issues, and there's lots of talk about West School right now, and so they're dealing with some things. So we're looking at trying to figure out a time where we can all get together again. I suggested we should bring in the Park District, the Park Board as well, and I think just for the sake of harmony and, and having everyone working, you know, rowing in the same direction, we should spend more time together. And so Mr. Phelan is going to help with that, and I know that the School District is going to see about doing some scheduling, so hopefully we'll have a meeting sooner than later, especially, I'm hoping that we can do it prior to any sort of decision that they need to make on West School, so that at least we can get grilled by those people the same way they can, and everyone at least is on, has all the same information, so.
Okay. Well, thank you. Mr. Phelan will take care of that. And then employee recognition, November was Rory Subey, Erin Ray was December, Debbie Holverson, Chris Carlson, Lisa Botman, Nicholas Rankie, and then congratulations, Mr. Swanson on your recognition by the International Municipal Lawyers Association. And again, thank you to Brett Jerron and his eighth grade class for meeting with us, and Kent Anderson, we mourn your, his loss and thank him for his 35 years on the Board of Adjustments, and congratulations to Judge Jensen for being the North Dakota Supreme Court Chief Justice. So with that, we take a motion to adjourn. Mr. Sandy motions, Ms. Marshall quickly seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. We stand adjourned, thank you. Out.
This meeting has been brought to you in part by...
Let Grand Forks International Airport help you start your next vacation off on the right foot. Grand Forks International Airport offers flights to the sunny destinations of Orlando, Las Vegas, and Phoenix on Allegiant, and connections anywhere in the world through Minneapolis-St. Paul on Delta. Forget the hassle of long drives, parking nightmares, and stressful check-ins. The convenience of flying locally means less headaches and more time for you. Grand Forks International Airport, your airport, simply grand.